Does it look like it's going to be able to record the meeting? Or show the meeting?
The meeting is being recorded.
Yes, we're all recorded in our non-live meeting. I mean, I mean. Oh, thanks. We'll put that in for next time. Okay. Shall I? Right, 6:42. My gavel is in the car. I'm calling this meeting to orders, so sorry for the delay, but hopefully that gave folks a chance to log into Zoom because Facebook stream is not happening. We just don't have the bandwidth, that's the short-term explanation. However, the recording will be added in later. It is being recorded by Peg TV, everybody. So, super excited about that. This meeting is called to order and we can do a roll call and pledge.
Okay. Kathy McCarthy.
Oh, I'm here.
Chris Nettles.
I'm here.
Darlene Warner. I'm here. Jake Strickler.
Absent.
And Joe Schneider.
Absent.
Mel McMurran.
Here.
Okay.
Wonderful. Paul Duncan, please lead us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have an agenda that could be approveded.
Move to approve the agenda?
Motion by Chris. Seconded by Robert Stark. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda.
As corrected.
Oh?
As corrected.
As corrected?
Yes.
Oh, no, that was just the agenda. Now the minutes. Peruse the minutes if you have not yet already. I have a correction to make. As much as I would have liked to, I did not make the motion to adjourn at 8:15. It was somebody else.
I think that might have been me.
So.
You interrupted.
You're right, I might have even done that wrong.
I didn't see any other mistakes. Anybody? Oh, there was a spelling error.
Chris, was it Chris?
Yeah, I probably moved to it. I usually move to adjourn.
Chris moved to adjourn.
Let's get out of here.
Madam President.
Chairperson, yes.
There is no requirement for a motion to adjourn. Normally at the end of the meeting, a US lead person asks if there's any further business to come forward or if nothing comes up, we say meeting adjourn is totally acceptable under Robert's Rules of Order.
Robert Stark's Rules of Order allows me the power. Oh, Robert's Rules of Order.
Robert's Rules of Order.
I'll be here until my term is up. Okay, thank you for that.
But if we're following Rosenberg's, it might be different.
Yeah, I was about to say, you just went through the bylaws.
I did.
We don't follow Robert's Rules.
Yeah, because that's what I'm used to following Roberts, and then that's when I noticed we're following Rosenberg's, so I haven't reviewed Rosenberg's, I'm most familiar with Roberts. So, I don't know what Robert's Rules of Order says about adjournment. So, not your Roberts, but.
After 35 years of public meetings, endeavor once asking for a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, okay. We'll verify that with the Rosenberg's, I think, and then, yeah.
And we only use the spirit of Robert's Rules of Order, otherwise it would be no meeting, no meeting, we'd be here for weeks on end.
Exactly.
I'm totally. Totally in favor of in the spirit of Robert's Rules.
Me too. In the spirit of Robert's Rules of Order, does someone want to motion? For an approved agenda. I mean, approved amended minutes.
Motion.
Sure.
It's about what I said, comment regarding 911 calls and research related to solo increase in 911 calls.
Right.
But well, that's not what it was, then a possible increase in number of persons and possible increase, that's a major point.
Okay.
And research related to calls with resulting head injuries.
Okay.
And vehicle.
And what?
Vehicle accidents.
Okay. So, let me increase. I am trying to get to my.
Apparent increase in calls.
Okay, so comment regarding 911 calls and research related to solo increase in, so research related to increase in.
To, related to falls with resulting head injuries.
With resulting head injuries.
And vehicle accidents.
Injuries. And vehicle accidents. Solo, so calls and research related to solo calls and accidents with resulting head injuries.
But the words apparent increase would appear before 911?
Yeah, regarding. Well, I'm assuming possible.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve amended minutes. Last meeting. May 18th. Second?
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Tom, was that an opposition or was that an approved, an aye? An aye?
All right, good, good.
Want to make sure? Okay.
I'm not going to use my cellphone as a gavel anymore. All right. Short announcements. Are there? Short announcement on something that's not already on the agenda. Well, there's the next one.
Oh, okay.
Three minutes. A short announcement is like, we're doing bingo every Saturday, right?
Yes, bingo every Saturday, and if you'd like a beverage this evening, I will go over your items in the refrigerator and stuff. And all of that food sitting by the door and those plastic bags are there for your disown to take with everything you like. We want it to go away, let them wait for you. So, please help yourself.
There's enough green beans you could make, green bean casserole. For an arm. Decaf.
Decaf?
That's why it's still big.
Any other short announcements? Is that about that topic we kind of mentioned earlier? Hang on for the next one. You get the three-minute discuss, the public and board comment on a non-agenda item. Okay, Peg TV, you want to make a short announcement about who you are? Austin? Do you want to make a short announcement about Peg TV?
One, two. Okay, so I'm not really with Peg. I'm just with the county and have helped to put this system together for them so that they can go around to the town hall meetings and then, and make them more transparent and also make them more, the whole purpose was to bring, to bring the community closer together and to do that would be to bring the town halls, to widen the platform for town halls, so not only could they have a hybrid meeting, but they could also have an in-person meeting that could communicate together. So, just like what we do with the chamber meetings. So, that's the whole purpose of it. And Peg will be, and Austin will be probably one of the people that will be involved with this, and so he'll be out here and setting it up. And so what, if there is the bandwidth, which this room doesn't have that, meaning the speed of the internet access going up to feed up is not very strong here, it's .24. Typically, you need about 20. So, but if you did have, if the internet speed was improved, we could stream to Facebook and to YouTube as well as have Zoom. So, when that becomes available, we can do that. So, what is going to happen though, the meeting will be recorded and be able to be available 24/7 on the Peg Television Channel. Also, it'll be available on the County of Lake YouTube Channel as well. So, you'll have access to it whenever you need it. What's the last thing I can say? So, if you're not a member of Peg Television, I think that they would probably really appreciate, I think it's $25 a year to be a member of Peg. Not only do they have their Peg Television TV8 station, but they also have, they have a pretty good outreach on YouTube and Facebook. So, so it's really worthwhile. I think, I think they're going to do well. So, that's enough of that. I'm, again, I'm just, I'm just a videographer.
You're an awesome videographer. Thank you, Sam. Okay. Unless there's any other short announcements, we can do the three-minute comment on a non-agenda item.
Do we have a mic for them now?
Oh, there was a mic. Oh, it's, where did it go?
Is that, is that the mic for public comment?
Oh, yeah. So, come on, so, come on.
We used to have.
Robert in California. There's a microphone. You'll be on camera. You're being recorded.
I'm curious, does somebody have a laptop or something on that has a speaker connected to it? Because that's what the echo is from. There's a device.
This is not, it's.
Is it muted? It needs to be muted.
I don't hear it, so I saw it was muted.
Just the smallest.
Yeah, it's muted.
The mic is muted.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Gotcha.
Is that cycling around? Hello, everybody. My name is California Howland and I'm with the Cobb Area County Water District, and I just wanted to give you all an update on the status of the Rainbow Bridge.
If you guys can hear me, the mic that the person was just speaking to about the broadcast, if that were used for the meeting, we could hear.
Thank you, Glenn. So, Kay Swickelman came down here and let everyone know that the district has kind of experienced some financial difficulties and we did not have the money to do the pavement that we initially thought we might be able to do in 2020. And I took a quote from S&amp;K of $8,415 for the pavement down to the geothermal committee. And thanks to Supervisor Jessica Pisca, she got the conversation rolling around in the room. And there was a visitor there by the name Corey Draper, who has now offered to pay for the pavement. Along with Danielle Saperis, says Calpine can even get involved. And we owe a big thank, the district and the community to Supervisor Pisca and Supervisor Simon for getting that going for us. And I think it should be getting paved soon. And also an update on the bridge portion of the Rainbow Bridge, the Cobb Area County Water District will be doing maintenance on that, taking care of the pipeline, tightening the bolts, covering any paint, you know, if graffiti shows up there or if it just needs maintenance of paint getting faded, we will still be taking care of that, we just cannot afford to work on the Rainbow Road. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you, Jessica.
And so the. The cost is being shared between Calpine and Open Mountain.
And Open Mountain Energy.
Open Mountain is the new operator of the Bottle Rock, old Bottle Rock Power Plant.
That's what I've been told, yes, so.
And they'll be, they're expected to be at our July meeting to introduce themselves.
That's the old Bottle Rock Power?
On High Valley Road.
Yeah, on High Valley Road. Gotcha.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks for your time, Cal.
Thank you, guys.
Nope. I don't know what his last name. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Robert Thomas, and I had some thoughts that I wanted to share and I'm also asking for a little bit of support and an initiative that I'd like to direct more towards a strategy on something that's been an ongoing problem and something that we've also been kind of trying to find a strategic solution moving forward. As some of you may know, myself and Chief Paul Duncan, Greg Klaus, and Elliot Hurwitz, with support from Supervisor Pisca for helping to fund this project, we were able to manage to get through all those log decks from the Fox Drive project and also found, I guess you'd call a rehoming of all the chips. We had quite a really nice response from the community where people found good uses and respected the zero to five. I've got a lot of calls actually still asking for more, and I've got even more calls of folks that are asking for, hey, what can we do with the material that we have? So, I've got a deep passion about what we can do to make this all happen. And I'd like to bring a little bit of what we've been doing with the ACI to form more into more of a, an actual product of this, which would be more of like the biochar part of things. And I'd like to blend that with what we ended up using as a strategy towards the end of those decks, which was the grinding and the mulching, the composting. I'd like to put them together. I'd like to make something out of the science of what we all know works well, which is, it's devastating, but post-fire growth is amazing. It's promoting mycelium, it's promoting a lot of healthy things that are going on in the forest floor that are allowing things to grow back up. Second, I'd like to make good use of some of the material that we have, there's a lot of energy in this material, and if we do it the right way, which I'm throwing out, where we need to maybe implement something where we can work with South Lake and put together some of a food composting pickup program. We don't need that in our landfills, it's creating methane and we are in an area where we appreciate our clean air. There's a lot of different things that we can do in strategy moving forward, and I'm asking for your support. I'm trying to put something together myself. Been working with some county officials on permitting this, and I'm also asking for support from the committee and the council, Cal Fire and the community. Thank you very much.
And Robert, if someone wanted to get in touch with you to support you in this endeavor, how should they get in touch with you?
Thank you very much for that, Kathy.
Sure.
So, my email is robertthomas@r2company.org. If you want my direct company line, it's 707-928-8082. That's robertthomas@r2company.org.
And company is spelled out?
Yes, it is. Thank you for asking. Yes, sir.
In the beginning of when you first started speaking, you said something about people, something about them, whatever, do something with their materials.
Oh, great question. So, we, we have been working on trying to open up an area that is on the mountain. Currently, we work kind of out of the burn season, so we have folks that have material and we can have the chipping program or we also have Quacken Bush Mountain in Clear Lake where we can haul it and they can process it. But it is a long drive and it's semi-expensive to do that, so it would be nice to have something up here locally. And quite frankly, they have quite a bit of material already, they were just bought out by CNS Way Systems, so they're working with the Lakeport facility as well. So, that gives a little bit of space for us to grow here as a community and open something up.
Would it be almost like what you had numerous times, would it be smaller?
There would be that. We would always keep things small because number one, big piles are sometimes not what we want to see, but they're also sometimes containing an excessive amount of heat. And to be efficient with the process, it needs to be done in a certain way so that we can, we can keep things on the right path. Does that answer your question? Absolutely. A lot of what we have is, and I know I don't want to go over our three minutes, but we have a lot of carbon up here, so we have a lot of dead logs. And a lot of what you'll see in Lakeport and in Lake, in Clear Lake is there's a lot of green coming in, and that's the nitrogen, and they're mixing that up.
Robert?
I was asking for the food composting program. Yes, I know. We're wasting time. Thank you very much.
It's just that it's not an agenda item, so we can't really, we can't even say whether we think it's a good idea or not.
We got your question answered.
But that's why I wanted you to get your contact information out there so you can follow up with questions and feel free to talk offline.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, were there any other items? Short, no, three-minute comments on non-agenda items? Okay. We can move on then to Supervisor's comments. Oh, and happy birthday.
It's your birthday. Happy birthday.
So, first, I do want to, I want to thank Peg TV for being here and the board did budget this so that we could have transparency and consistency across all the advisory councils. So, I'm really glad to see that this is rolling out and I believe this is the first meeting where it's happening.
Yay, pioneering.
Yes, and I also want to thank Kathy, she came last week, was it last week?
It was a lifetime ago.
It was a lifetime ago to present on everything from Cobb Area Council, and it was the first of the committees to report out. Our clerk is asking all board-appointed committees to come and do a presentation on what they're working on, and Kathy set the bar pretty darn high.
Yay, Kathy, thank you.
Tom was there to support me, but just to show it's the work of the people and I'm just spreading the word. Thanks.
So, I just, I have a couple things, but I want to share that today, this evening, we wrapped up our budget hearings, and that's really what's kept us busy for the last couple of weeks and a lot of our department heads for the last couple of months. So, we adopted a recommended $380 million budget. And so I'm probably going to leave halfway through the meeting because I'm really tired. But I wanted to share that with you, it's a massive budget, it's, you know, it's not all discretionary funding, a lot of it comes from state and federal programs, but it's, that's our county budget, and I would like to know that. Thanks. For hazard trees, you know, I talk about this every time, but we did submit an application for the Inflation Reduction Act grant program with full support from Congressman Thompson and a lot of other local organizations to try and offset what the Cal OES application will be, which will be 25%. And that application, I believe it's coming to the board at our next meeting, which is on the 27th. So, I am really hoping we're going to be pushing that one through too and have both of them out there for approval. When we discussed budget today, we do have a few million dollars set aside to start the work once our project plan is accepted by Cal OES. And hopefully those funding sources will come through and help offset that cost, but we, we have been holding on to some funding and we just, we can't wait to get started. But I do hope that everyone has recognized all the tree work that's been happening on Bottle Rock, and that is thanks to, in collaboration with Clerk, the North Shore Fuel Crew, Cal Fire's on that side, it's Cal Fire Grant, and Chief Duncan's been out there, and the timber operators that the North Shore Crew was able to contract with. So, that is, it's looking really great. And I'm so happy, every time I drive by there, it's amazing to see just that little bit of area and that shaded fuel break and all those dead trees coming down. Going into the summer season, it's really important that we can keep up with that work. The Risk Reduction Authority, really excited, you'll see this press release come out soon, maybe it came out yesterday, but I was in budget hearings. The Risk Reduction Authority, which I'm the vice chair of, we applied with our climate resiliency officer for $649,000 in a round one funding from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, an adaptation planning grant. This is really exciting, this is really building in capacity and diversity, equity, inclusion in our programs. And so the priorities for this is assessing vulnerable vulnerabilities across Lake County and developing a climate action plan, a CAP, implementing specific actions identified in our local hazard mitigation plan, enhance multi, enhance public education and awareness of natural hazards and public understanding of disaster preparedness, a countywide evacuation plan, climate adaptation plan, and fund administrative support for our chief climate resiliency officer, which we were awarded that grant through a jumpstart grant last fall. We originally wrote in a support position for that role and we were asked to take it out, so this is great that six months later we got funding for it anyway. And embedding the values and actions promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in the RRA's leadership, membership, and processes. So, what's really critical about this is we are mandated to update our, our safety element, and a lot of these things are required in the safety element, including our countywide evacuation plan. And we did write an evacuation grant for the Soda Bay Corridor, and we've been doing multi-agency meetings with a consultant that we've engaged to develop that evacuation plan, so I'm really viewing that as a pilot project for this countywide evacuation plan. So, that's really exciting and all those things are underway and we, I think we got notice of this last week. And then last, next Monday, our county has adopted Juneteenth as a county holiday, which is a big deal. We have had proclamations the last couple of years, but this year our board decided that this was an important enough holiday for us to observe and remember and celebrate. And so county offices will be closed and we will not have a board meeting next Tuesday because of that. And going forward, we have funded positions for, you know, overtime and everything that's required because this is an investment that we believe in. I don't know if anybody has any questions? Yes?
Actually, speaking of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I just want to make note of the fact that the board also had a proclamation on Pride Month, so thank you for that, noticed that and just wanted to acknowledge it.
Yes, we did. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Fire season update. We should get you a theme song. Or that TV show.
Emergency now, emergency. Update on the Henderson Fire, 20.68 acres, 60% containment. I should have said in the short announcement, it's Middletown Days this weekend. So, we'll be in the parade for that. As far as staffing goes, the 19th, so coming up, we will be staffed one engine per station. So there'll be extra resources, which is good, would have been great yesterday. The Boggs LZ is almost complete, so they've been working up there to clear the landing zone for the new helicopter. The area is still flagged off, so it shouldn't be done for, flagged off for much longer. Folks will be allowed up there. Operation Force Multiplier, so if you signed up for the Hand Tool and Extinguisher, those will be distributed Sunday from 9:00 to 3:00. I did have a long discussion with Caltrans over the flagging, talked to the chief engineer. My request to them, and I'm sure supported here, is that anytime they're going to do single-lane road activities where it's down to one lane, it's flagged 24 hours a day. We don't want to have issues like we had with the lights during a fire condition. So my deal with them was as soon as we go to peak fire season, which is July 1st, anything after that, we'll be flagged 24 hours a day. So they are planning on starting on the bridge again, so that work will happen.
It's supposed to start today.
Yeah, I saw them out there. Are they out there? Yeah. And that other project, the one Red Bull Whispering Pines, looks like it should be done before then. So they, like, will stay. Burn permits, Jessica did hand me this on the burn.
I did.
What? Oh, sorry.
Kathy. And that came from one of our community members.
Okay. My correction, Kathy gave me this. Memory's really short today. It says about burn permits. Burn permits are suspended, so unless you have a urgent need to burn, those permits are suspended. If you have an urgent need to burn, that has to be articulated to me, and I will have a special exemption permit cut by one of my battalion chiefs who has to go out and inspect the pile. Then it has to be approved for burning by air quality. So it's a multi-step process. You have to validate that there is a need. So just having DORR debris is not enough that can be used in the greenway. So you have to articulate that need. And then also, in the inspection, you have to provide how you're going to extinguish a fire, how you're going to control it, equipment, water, all those things. So we're looking for all those things on exemption permit. But burning is allowed only with those exemptions. So folks have questions, I'll be happy to answer. Nope? Okay. Go ahead.
The CalFire people were in our neighborhood doing assessments of fire safety. They said it was the first time they'd ever done it. And I know it was done like about three years ago, like some day.
First, first time done this year.
No, they said in our neighborhood.
It's their, they're new inspectors, so they haven't been up here, they have been, this area has been canvassed before. So those are LE 100 or Defensible Space Inspectors, and that's a great thing for the community to have a dialogue with them to go, hey, it's, it's good, but how do I make it better? Oh, we just trim this, cut this, put this over here. They're happy to answer those kind of questions.
Are they, are they doing all the neighborhoods in Cobb, or how, how is that working?
Targets opportunity. They should be doing one at a time, so they should be working their way through Gulf, they should be working their way through Gifford, all those, they should be working all the way through. They, we should be getting every house once over three years.
Oh, terrific.
In the county. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Treasurer's Report, Chris.
So my last report in the May meeting, we had operating budget balance of $22,050.61. We've had a number of transactions since, since the May 18th meeting. General fund transactions include rent for the hub, an electric bill, and Zoom for a total of $835.36 from the general fund account. And we've had money come in for the Blackberry Cobbler Festival vendor fees in the amount of $1,825 in vendor fees. So we're rolling on Cobbler Festival vendors. We paid some square fees and payable app fees, so we've taken in a total after fees of $17,053.89 for the festival account. That gives us operating budget balance of $22,969.14. We also still have unchanged the Small Business Loan Fund of $48,082.63. So our total net assets for the Cobberry Council are $71,051.77. That's a $918 increase from last time. And I have Madam Chair and Madam Secretary reports for you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
And if anybody wants a copy of the Treasurer's Report, it is up here as well for anybody who would like one.
All right, thanks. Okay, Mr. Stark, you're still on the agenda. Do you like to take the floor? Okay. This is regarding Cobb Mountains.
This is regarding the bridge, the Rainbow Bridge, and based on recent events, the Friends of Cobb Mountain have pushed the shift lever into neutral, but the engine is still running, and we'll see where it goes. But we're not done with it until it's done right. And I'm not just talking about the pavement. I'm talking about the whole scenario of ownership and responsibility. So, but it looks great. We're so glad that the work has been arranged for. It's about time. There's been very little geothermal money put into Cobb in the last, since I retired, to be quite frank with you. And we're happy as clams to see progress being made. So we'll just leave it at that.
All right. I have a question.
Okay.
Who are the active members of Friends of Cobb now?
Who are the members? Oh, the members are the same. John has David Coleman, Sharon Matzinger, myself, my wife. John Leonard was on last time I looked. I believe we're down to about six members.
Okay. Are they meeting regularly?
I'm sorry?
Are they meeting regularly?
Yeah, we have to meet once a year by, by law, and we are moving toward being, no longer being as 501 F C3 and going to a 501 C3. So.
What's the fund balance? The fund balance?
$61,000 and change in our bank account.
Okay.
So.
Should we move to withdraw the item from the agenda, or?
No, I, I don't. Since nothing was.
It's just moot?
No motion was made, we have nothing to approve or disapprove.
Okay.
Committee reports. Any Firewise communities want to give an update?
I think Magdalena gave, oh, twice.
Aines had her hand up.
Well, you got to sign that.
Oh, yeah, you did. Do you want to use a microphone?
Yeah. Here's a picture of one tree. How would you like that every day? These guys were incredible. I called PG&E, they came out the same morning, and Kyle came first, and then another fella came from vegetation, and three trees were down in one day. Here's a picture. That's the last one. This is the original one I wanted down. They got two on Cortola's property that were really needing help, and he wasn't around. So I was amazed. I really, I had to sit home and watch them. Here's a picture. Pass it down. The guy way on top, they took down the branches first.
Oh, I see him.
The branches first. And I told them that if they pass Middletown, go to La Pirella's and have dinner on me, but they didn't. They were busy. And so calling PG&E does work slash vegetation, they were on it the same timeframe. I couldn't ask for more. And the new Firewise sign that is on Rainbow right after the bridge to the right is just awesome. I have a picture of that, too. Thank you.
Good work?
Thank you. Did it work?
Good work, I said. Good, not did it work, but good work.
It's related to Firewise. Should I go to the mic?
Of course you should.
Yes.
Sir Gleneth.
The, I got a call from Daniel, who is the official guy for CERT teams.
Oh.
And he is in the process of trying to really get that activated. They're getting, they had a training this last Tuesday for the cone, or the people that, for traffic watchers, whatever that.
Traffic controller?
Yeah, I guess there's a specific training, and he was doing that and encouraging other CERT members. I'm not sure who went. I couldn't. And that's, that's it. I just thought that was worth mentioning.
Great. All right.
Also, I believe Magdalena sent in a report on the Cobberry Council email. Did you see that?
I don't have access, I need the password.
You don't have access to that?
No.
I don't have access to it either.
We can add, maybe we can add that into the minutes afterwards.
The group, the.
I think, yeah, she sent it.
The group I have access to, but like if someone sends it to.
I don't know if she replied to the group or to the Cobberry Council email, but either way.
The email I don't have access to yet.
Maybe I can send, let's make sure that you get it, and I can send you her report.
Okay.
And we can put it into the minutes.
Okay, thank you. And a report from Magdalena.
Great. Okay. And I know Jones Creek doesn't have anything to report. Lori, I know, has been working on getting her neighborhood report up to date. They're already entering in paperwork. Don't forget to do your paperwork. All that work that you do counts towards the hours that we need to record for recertification. And being in a Firewise neighborhood does help. So if you need a copy of your neighborhood's Firewise certification, you're going to want to contact either Magdalena, Cindy, Gleneth, or me.
Or David.
David or Lori. Or they're at the hub. Do you have them for each neighborhood?
Excuse me?
Do you have the letter, the certifications for each neighborhood at the hub?
I have the logage, the form.
Oh, the recording forms are at the hub?
Yeah.
Right. There's a certificate that you can show your insurance, and that might help. It might. Okay. Communications Committee?
Oh, is it my time?
It's your, use your microphone. I don't know how sensitive they are.
How close does it need to be? All right.
The closer the better.
The closer the better. All right. All right. Communications Committee, we've had more check-ins. Actually, when Kathy's been net control, we had the most check-ins.
Awesome.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven. She filled in when I did not have a voice or not really filled in because we all need to do net control. But we do check-ins every Wednesday evening, and we're getting more now that the fire season is approaching and upon us. I think we had our first real fire yesterday and had a snorkel malfunction on C-104. But yeah, we still have the new repeater at the Hill location, and once we get everybody's GMRS radios reprogrammed, which I think we're about halfway there or so, the sooner we get all those reprogrammed, we will have the new repeater up at the Mountain location. Last night, the check-ins, there are a couple people that we've been struggling, or at least where I'm at, and being able to hear, we were actually able to hear them. We've got about three new members that are active now. Some others haven't gotten their radios programmed, so we haven't heard them on the air yet, but some enthusiastic new GMRS users. We've got group leader back on Channel 8, the Boggs Group, which has helped increase check-ins. She had been away for a college course. So yeah, we're getting more people and more activity, and I don't have too much technical stuff to share about the repeater stuff, but the networking's going a lot better and hope to get more people involved in group leading and net controlling and, you know, kind of rotating through that and getting everyone networked. Do you have anything to add, Mel?
Yes. Keep your radios on. There've been some complaints.
Yes, there we go.
We do have some static.
Yes.
On our frequency, and it does not seem to affect the alert channel, so those people who've been turning their radios off should just turn it to the alert channel, and you can listen without interference as we chase down where that's coming from.
Yeah.
Also, Firewise, all the check-in hours count as Firewise volunteer hours, so log those.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, so if you do net control, that's a solid hour. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, though, because a couple people have emailed us, like if you can't hear us or have some comments or hearing that, well, static interference noise on the regular, your main channels, and then it's like, oh, this is too much, I'm not hearing anything but just, you know, noise. People have said that they're just turning their radios off on their main channels because of that, which we're chasing down and researching and finding out what we can do to get rid of it and find out where it's coming from, et cetera, et cetera. So like Mel said, don't turn off your radio on the main channel or neighborhood channel if you're hearing that. Like you said, you know, keep it on your alert channel because you don't want to miss any alerts if there is, in fact, an emergency or something that you need to hear where if you have your radio off, you're going to miss that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Very important. Yep, three minutes up.
I have a question, Mel. I think I already answered it, but the sound you're talking about, is that with some scanners? And I don't have a scanner, I'm like, trying to squelch all the way to one way, and that's what I'm hearing on the main channel, too, is that signals like this.
There's, there's more than one thing going on, it seems like. There's something that just cuts in and out that sounds like some machinery or telemetry, and.
Yeah.
And we're kind of looking that direction. But there's also interference, we think, from a possible repeater or users in the Sierra coming this direction. That happens at night, but there's something that happens all the time that sounds like a pump or something going on.
Just great stat.
Well, yeah, if you take the squelch off, there is a static, but.
That's the sound of getting a squelch step.
Oh, even if it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's very similar to that. Dad's coming up for Father's Day, and I'm asking him to bring a spectrum analyzer with him. Mel?
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can find a direction, we're just going a little close.
I just.
Not everybody hears it. That's why, and if people hear it, they should report. Email cobalert@gmail.com so we know. Oh, seems to be over there.
Not just that, where I'm at, and the signal's really poor the last month or so, since, I think since the change to the different repeaters.
The mountain.
But I don't know.
It could be, we're not sure. There's a lot of trees between Siegler and Boggs.
What he's got is a fancy piece of equipment that you can monitor the actual frequency and see signal strength, and he can even do a directional to see where the signal's coming from.
That's a spectrum analyzer?
Yes.
Sounds like something Ghostbusters use.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, he's got the jiggle watts and this and that. His garage is full of just tons of fun stuff that nobody would ever, like, think to use. It goes, he could talk to you for hours. If you want to fall asleep, have him describe and explain all that stuff.
All right, I'm going to move on then.
Yes, please.
Okay. Forest Health Committee, do I have the wrong name? I should have Jake on there.
Elliot or Jake, either one.
Elliot or Jake. Neither one are here. But we did hear from Robert Thomas, although not of the Forest Health Committee.
But we did hear from Robert Thomas, although not of the Forest Health Committee. It's related. We'll lump that in with that committee's activity, I'm sure. Okay, Economic Development Committee, Chris?
Uh, the Economic Development Committee meets the last Tuesday of every month, so we will have our next meeting on June 29th. Uh, keep your eyes on the Cobb Area Council listserv or on Facebook for the agenda and announcements.
Okay. Uh, I'm pulling up my calendar to tell you when our next Blackberry Cobbler Festival meeting is. I'm sure I put it in there. I have it, uh, July 6th at 6:00 PM. Uh, we're going to, we've switched to move, uh, meeting at the Pizza Place. We met on the back patio, it was kind of nice. And, um, we have put out our sponsorship request letters and you'll never guess who wants to sponsor the cups again? Calpine. They're, they're going to.
Calpine.
Yeah. It's not like official, official, because they haven't gone through their, but we've got a rebel, like, yeah, they're committed to doing it. So that's our first sponsor.
Not quite thank you, Cal, Calpine, but getting close.
I'm going to thank them anyway. Thank you, Calpine. And, um, they're, they've always been very supportive and we appreciate that.
Yes, they have.
And first sponsor. Yeah, so that's it, July, oh, so if you're interested in sponsoring, let us know. Um, we've got the vendor applications, what?
Oh, I was going, vendor application?
Vendor, vendor applications are available. If you want a vendor application, let us know. You can email us at cobarea council dot.
Cobarea Council.
At gmail dot org. And then, um, or you can send us. Dot com. Sorry, cobarea council at gmail dot com. Or you can send us a message through Facebook, um, through the messenger and we can get it to you that way. And, um, moving along.
When is the festival?
August 26th from 11:00 to 4:00. An hour shorter. Um, a little bit more manageable for our army of volunteers. Okay.
The Cobbler Festival meeting, you said is July 6th.
Yes.
At 6:00.
July 6th at 6:00 at the Pizza Place.
Okay, just last time it was at Mountain Meadow, so this time.
Yeah, it was changed last minute at, from, at the la, the last meeting had a last minute location change.
Right.
Yeah.
So back to the Pizza Place. Or Cobb Mountain Pizza.
Cobb Mountain Pizza.
What time?
6:00. Any other questions?
On the Economic Development Committee?
When is the what?
Economic Development Committee. Uh, it is June 29th. Be at the hub. At the hub, yeah.
Time?
Oh, 6:00, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, it's a running thing.
We didn't have anything from Forest Health Committee?
No, they're not here.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's it.
Wow.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Shall I?
Just call this meeting to a close?
By the power vested in me. By Robert Stark. We are adjourning at 7:34.
Aye.
And what time did we?
6:42.
Thank you.
I brought it down.
Thank you, thank you.